We're not just sitting here for no reason. Okay, it looks like we're, we're ready to go. So, uh, welcome everybody to the Board of Commissioners today. September 5th, 2023, we are gonna start this meeting with an invocation by Pastor Joe Doherty from the New Promise Lutheran Church and a member of our Interfaith Council.
Thank you.
Let's pray. Gracious God, we thank you for the leaders in this room and for the work that is done in this chamber. Lord, we ask that you would equip them for their calling as leaders in this county. Give them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues they face. Help them understand the gravity of the needs in our county. Give them keen thirst for justice and fairness in the decisions they make, even as you fill them with a spirit of cooperation to work with other leaders in our communities. Though the work they do comes with privileges, may they not forget their responsibilities. And though we look to the people in this room for leadership, may we not forget that the well-being of our communities is a responsibility for all the members of this county. Finally, we pray for the agenda tonight, that you would give them wisdom as they work through this agenda to make decisions that would give glory to you and benefit all who work and live in Washington County. This we pray in the confidence of your loving grace. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much. Very good.
Thank you.
All right, next we'll have a Pledge of Allegiance led by Jerry Curtis from the US, retired US Navy.
Thank you. If you please, follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
Thank you, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, Jerry. Thank you for your service.
We're going to start with the consent agenda, which is a means of expediting the consideration of routine matters. If a commissioner requests that items be removed from the consent agenda, those items are placed at the beginning of the regular agenda. Other than request to remove items, a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda is not debatable.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the following items on the consent agenda. Item A, consideration of auditor-approved claims for payment for August 16th, 2023 through September 5th, 2023. Item B, consideration of regular commission meeting minutes of August the 15th, 2023. Item C, consideration of commission work meeting minutes of August 16th, 2023. Item D, consideration of commission work meeting minutes of August 30th, 2023. Item E, consideration of administrative adjustments for real property. Item F, consideration of administrate administrative adjustments for personal property. Item G, consideration of applications for property tax abatement, of which there was one. Item H, acknowledgement of publishing notice of adoption of ordinance number 2023-1237-O, published on Sunday, August 20th, 2023. Item I, acknowledgement of publishing for notice of adoption of ordinance number 2023-1238-O, also published on Sunday, August 20th, 2023. Item J, consideration of professional services agreement with landmark testing and engineering regarding earthquake safety testing at Confluence Park. And item K, consideration of temporary public defender agreement. That's my motion.
It's a long list.
Yeah, I'll second that motion on the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
If we have a motion to second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. The regular agenda, we'll start with item number one, an election report from our clerk auditor, Ryan Sullivan. Is today a busy day for you, Ryan? Something going on today that I didn't know about? Is it your birthday today?
It's my birthday. No, it's, it's really busy, but we're happy to come up and give a little report for you. Um, as of last night, um, we have had over 23,000 registered voters in Washington County vote. A little over 18,500 registered Republicans have voted, which would indicate about a 28% turnout for the CD2 race. We, we're going to get a lot of ballots in today. Uh, we've had a lot of help, multiple shifts, bringing them into our processing center, um, in our basement. I, I've worked here a long time and I, I, I remember coming to some of these meetings and, and seeing some of my predecessors, like Kim Haven, the former clerk auditor. I remember he wept, like, and I, and I know why now. I mean, you have, you have employees that are working 14, 15-hour shifts, chipping in from, uh, other departments. Things break, you have IT show up to, to fix something. It's, it's pretty amazing, especially like on holidays. And, uh, it's, it's been amazing to, to, to witness that. I also wanted to address, um, a resolution that was recently put out by the Republican National Committee. I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but I, I highlighted a couple, couple of areas I wanted to talk about. Says in one section, whereas election experts agree, that the title of the resolution, let me go back, is urging a return to excellence in American voting and elections. Election experts agree that the most resilient voting systems use paper ballots, either marked by hand or with an assistive device, and are verified by the voter before any means of tabulation. The Republican National Committee boldly opposes means of voting that do not have the proper safeguards in place and are exclusively electronic, and calls on every county and state in the nation to use as the default ballot systems, which are fully auditable, namely hand-marked voter-verified paper ballots, to ensure every voter is memorialized by a paper record. The Republican National Committee supports the rights of counties and states that are willing and able to competently and efficiently implement voting procedures that do not require the use of machines and those that implement hand-county procedures that are fully auditable. I wanna go back and read the sent, the first sentence of that paragraph I just read. The Republican National Committee supports the rights of counties and states that are willing and able. The RNC is not a, a rule-making statutory body. Like, they don't, they can't dictate state law, um, to Utah or nor Washington County. I just wanted to make that clear. There are some very good points, I, I believe, in, in the resolution. I wanted to talk about some of the highlights of Washington County and how we are following a lot of the RNC's recommendations. We are blessed in Washington County, and we have a tried and true voting methods that were implemented many years ago, not hastily or during a pandemic like, like other places. I, I don't believe the intent of this resolution had Utah. That's not the reason Utah, uh, this resolution was not written because of something that's happened in Utah. There are some, some issues in other states that we've seen and read about. We use paper ballots that are marked by hand, as the resolution talks about. These hand-marked voter-verified paper ballots have anti-counterfeit properties. This has been true for many years in Utah. Ballot envelopes are high-tech to assure the promise of one person, one vote, along with signature verification procedures. We are confident in our process. I will go above and beyond what the state requires by doing some, some hand-count audits, audits on the precinct level. My plan right now is to randomly select, um, depending on how many ballots we get in. There's really simple, uh, sample size calculators available online that anyone can go check these numbers. This is, I'm not making this up. But if you use a, a sample size of the ballots we get in at a 99% confidence interval with a 5% margin of error, that's what I'm going to hand count, um, randomly. I'm gonna, gonna choose a precinct randomly until we get to that number. It could be a large precinct, it could be several small ones. Our new sorting equipment allows easier tabulation and auditing by geographic areas and precincts. A vote by mail system, the vote by mail system is state law, and we will continue to comply with state law. We have multiple processes to ensure clean voter rolls, and we implement them daily, weekly, monthly, and yearly obituaries. Change of address forms, driver's license changes, and other day data points are used to delete ineligible voters from voter rolls. For eligible voters, we are confident in our signature verification process. If your signature doesn't match, your ballot won't be counted unless you cure the ballot. We fully support implement voter identification laws and procedures to ensure that each person votes. Each person who votes is identified as a registered voter. Trying to think if there's some other things I wanted to talk about. I, I did wanna make a public statement that I know that you as commissioners get, I, I hear it all the time. Why don't we do this? Why don't we do that regarding elections? Well, folks, the deal is, these three gentlemen up here act as the Board of Canvassers for a county election. If they came to me tonight and said, Ryan, we want you to hand count exclusively, hand count all the ballots. You know what I would say? I would say no, because they're not over the Washington County elections. I am. And it's a responsibility I take very seriously, and I want it to be accurate. And I've seen from the little, the little parts of the process where we do hand count, guess what? It's wrong. Almost ev, not every time, but there's certain processes where a machine, down to our new sorted machine, for example, will sort out a precinct. And we have the reports waiting at the end of the machine, and we have the humans at the end of these trays. And this is an extra verification. You know what I do? I sit at the end of that machine and I watch as they do a little check and they count. And I make them tell me, what did you get? What's the number you got? I got 50. Well, guess what? This report says 51. Hold on. Yeah, there's 51. There's 50. Time and time and time again. So, I guess what I'm saying is, give these guys a break. They can't, they can't change the Washington County elections. I guess bring the heat on me. I'm not going to hand count. I'm going to audit it. I'm gonna make sure we have accurate results. And, um, I'll get off my soapbox now, but, but thanks.
Well, thank you, Ryan. And one of the things that is different from the last election cycle we went through is that before we were putting in, into what we call batches, with my understanding, which were 50. And, uh, this time they will be sorted according to precinct laws, right? And, uh, the thing that makes that beneficial for everyone as far as verification is that we tabulate elections based on precincts. And so now we will have a tabulation as well as all of the ballots involved in, that created that tabulation. And that will make it easier to audit randomly, uh, the ballot situations.
Correct. And if there's ever a, a re, uh, a recount, uh, we'll, we'll have those ballots separated so that we can recount a, a, a race. Yeah, so, yes, the machine does tabulate on the precinct level, and that's why I think it's important that, that me as your clerk auditor doesn't put 100% faith in the machine. I, I need to check it and audit and make sure it's, it's tabulating correctly. And, and now that we have it on the precinct level, we can do that.
Well, I'd, I would ask the public not to put too much pressure on you because, um, I would be worried that we would be looking for another clerk auditor and we need a competent, uh, qualified clerk auditor.
With all the, I'm just gonna say it's been refreshing to hear from, from others that, uh, they appreciate what our office is doing and it's, it's not all bad and doom and gloom.
Thank you.
And Ryan, I want to emphasize too that I've had several candidates for various offices throughout the county say that they appreciate your office and that they will accept, even at the narrowest of margins, the results of, uh, that are posted tonight or, or whenever. But, um, I thought that was refreshing from candidates who also recognize and trust that their very hopes and dreams are hanging upon this being accurate. And that they trust you. I also want to emphasize that you can't get, just go rogue either. You know, you have clerk auditor associations that you are a part of, and you discuss these things with, throughout the state. And then the Lieutenant Governor's Office also has something to say to you if you were just, just decidedly to go out on your own.
That is true.
Thank you, Ryan. I was here on Saturday and, uh, saw your team working hard on a, on a drizzly Saturday when they'd probably rather be home with their families. But the, the election this year is, was obviously moved. Even on the holiday you were here, normally it's not the day after Labor Day. But thank you to your team and to you, uh, for everybody coming.
All right.
Hi.
Yes.
We'll, we'll let you get back to work.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Item number two is consideration of ratification of purchase request. Ray Boyer.
I'd like to apologize for my casual attire. It's been a manual Labor Day for me.
You're all right, Ray.
Um, the first thing here is just one ratification. This is a blanket PO for the tourism conference, um, that we are hosting. And this is for the dinner. We needed to make a deposit on that. So I asked for pre-approval and here to ratify it today. The total of the, the catering is $20,690, and we needed to make a $5,000 deposit on that, which we have done. Unless there's any questions on that. That's all the ratifications I have.
Once again, this is a budgeted item. Um, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, ratify the purchase request that has been presented to us for the tourism conference.
Motion to second, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. Ray, item three is consideration of purchase requests.
Uh, the first one I have here is for the Wildlife Museum located at the Dixie Center. One of the HVAC units has broken, so we are replacing that, so the AC will work for the rest of the summer. Um, the total of this is $29,740. And this purchase request involves the emergency replacement for the one, this is from one company that our maintenance team could find that had a unit in stock, so. The next one is for the Clerk Auditor's Office. This is for an addition to our financial software. This will allow us to go mostly paperless. Um, it's a document manager, and it's $37,030. And the annual maintenance on, on this contract will be $5,500 a year. Any questions on that one at all? Um, the next one is for the legacy park network, in, in, network infrastructure. This includes all the switches, power supplies, um, main components, servers, whatever IT needs to get that, um, set up. This is for $36,128.42.
Now, is this for the cameras or is this for the, um, internet?
No, this is just for the networking. The cameras, we've done already.
Okay, very good.
Um, the next one, the final one is for tourism. This is a blanket PO for the rest of the year. This is for creative services. And this is for $28,050. And unless there's any questions on anything, that's all I have.
Thank you, Ray. Mr. Chairman, the following purchase requisitions that have been already, uh, stated by Ray be approved.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Thank you very much, Ray. Item number four is consideration of Public Works Report. Ron, our Public Works Director.
You should have a paper in your packet there that tells you the roads. And we're here because we're changing our list of roads we work on this year. We had some roads that were still under construction by various utilities that we couldn't get in and chip without making a mess of everything and having them make a mess of our roads. So, that list you have before you is the list we are actually doing now. They were working on that list until the end of last week. And now we're, uh, stopped for a little bit. We gotta clean off a bunch of roads and clean out some borrowed ditches and other stuff that happened last week with our rains and stuff that filled everything full of sand and mud. So, they will get back to doing Chip Seal Project next Monday, and it'll just kick everything back a week from where we were. So, that's the list we'd ask you to ratify.
Very good. How did we fare in the?
Minor, minor stuff, just borrowed ditches filling up or water coming down off hills fast and jumping out of a borrowed ditch and running across the road. Uh, spreads a little dirt and rocks across there. So, we do have a couple of our outer roads that had significant water running down it. One person with a Jeep ended up down it nose-first. I'm not sure what he was doing, but he couldn't, couldn't go any farther because the nose was stuck in the bottom of the ditch. It was a significant ditch, so they got him pulled out the next day when it dried out a little bit. But for the most part, we had minor, uh, damage out on the outer areas. And as far as I know, the municipalities were kind of the same way. They had a lot of overflow that dropped dirt, sediment along the roads, and they're cleaning up, little bit of wash along the edges. But for getting two and three inches of rainwater over a two-day period, why we did Whirlin' Valley thing.
So, all those investments in flood mitigation are paying off.
That definitely helped.
Okay, so let's see. Mr. Chairman, um, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt, um, the Public Works Report, and it's been presented to us by our Public Works Director, Ron Whitehead.
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor say aye.
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 Thanks.
Motion passes. Thank you very much, Ron. Take your crews. Good luck, uh, continuing to clean those things up. Item number five is consideration of Resolution Number R 2023-3168, a resolution approving an inter-local agreement to help fund the construction of a road expansion near Sand Hollow in Hurricane City.
Hello. So, this is a destination development application that ran through the Tourism Advisory Board last month. And this road extends, um, the Sand Hollow Road pavement from SR7 to Sand Mountain OHV staging area, referred to as Waddy's Corral. And this road improves safety, improves access, improves the experience for both visitors and residents. Um, the total project cost is $180,000. Uh, the request was for $50,000. And that was the TAB Board recommendation.
Now, is this the one going up to the water tank or is that another one that, um, this is, remind me which one this is?
This is just going up to the staging area. So, this just extends the road to the staging area.
In Sand Hollow?
Yeah, in Sand Hollow.
So, there was a state grant that got them partway. This is finishing off the,
Correct.
the, the state grant that didn't. So, most of it was paid with the state grant.
There were several different contributors actually to the project, but yes.
Very good. Mr. Chairman, move on item number five that we approved. Resolution Number R 2023-3168, a resolution approving an inter-local agreement to help fund the construction of a road expansion near Sand Hollow in Hurricane City.
Very good, and I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Item number six, the consideration of Resolution Number R 2023-3169, a resolution approving the expenditure of TRT funding for an event marketing agreement for the Trail Hero Event. Chad.
So, this is a resolution, um, presented to the, the TAB, the Tourism Tax Board last month also for funding out of the TRT tax to fund, uh, a marketing agreement with the Monster Energy Trail Hero Event and Music Festival. That'll go on mainly, we're looking at the Trail Hero Event that's staged out at Sand Hollow State Park. Six-day event, October 2nd through the 7th, 2003. This request is for $50,000 for marketing, um, agreements that we will do to over 6,000 registered riders this year. With this as an adventure, a rock crawling event and guided tours of Sand Mountain and in the area where they'll be based at, Sand Hollow State Park.
Brittany, you may need to come back up for just a second, but could you, what's the economic, expected economic impact off of this event?
Right around, what do we decide? About, yeah, 56 million on this one per year.
Small.
They've, each year in the seven years, this is the seventh year, each year it's almost doubled in the amount of attendees. And there are about 1,500 more registered vehicles this year than there was last year for Jeeps and rock crawling events. They had, on the highest day, you're talking about 50,000 people through the gates of Sand Hollow in total, 150,000 to 200,000 people during the week for that event. So, um, and most of them do stay in hotels, Airbnbs, VRBOs, and there's only about 25% that actually camp.
They buy things in stores, they shop, they buy gas, they go.
Yeah, it's a huge, a huge event that we're lucky to have here. It's a world-renowned event. It's also counterparts in Japan and stuff that they go out there. And this also leads to the manufacturers coming out here and visiting the, like Jeep and Kawasaki and those guys to film their commercials and stuff like that within our county. And there'll be about 400 to 500 different manufacturers that'll be out here on, through this event to look at Washington County to either move their businesses here and create that economic impact or to shoot commercials and other, and other events here throughout the year.
It's actually a great event, I think, you know? When you're on the east side of the county, you know that it's, it's there just because you see all the Jeeps parked at the hotels and vacation rentals. I would imagine a lot of those rigs are, are in plus thousand. But also at the same time, you don't necessarily feel the impact as a citizen, so I think it's a great event.
Well, that, that was kind of my point, is I think it's helpful to remind the public sometimes that everybody's job in Washington County is somehow tied to Design National Park. It's our largest economic driver by far, um, a single economic driver. And, uh, and we try and diversify that. The park has got congestion issues and, and so we don't want to, to lose the $967 million that that park brings into Washington County a year. And this is one of the ways that we help diversify it. $56 million is, uh, that's it. That's a hefty impact on a single event for a week, right? Uh, but it's not just in the park and it's not just soccer teams downtown St. George. It's, it's a way to, to dilute the impact of tourism around the county, spread the, the love, so to speak, on some of their spending. They tend to shop near where they're, they're staying. And, uh, and so it's a, it's a great thing to help, to help the economy of Washington County and, and let the private sector, which is doing it, and we just try and help them along, which is, and Brittany, you can answer this part a little more clearly, uh, just because you just did it last week again. But the tourism tax dollars are mandated on how they're spent based on state law. And some people might need to have that reminder that these are not property tax dollars. So, Brittany, why don't you speak to that real quick and then?
At least 47%.
And a little closer to the microphone there.
At least 47% of the transient route tax collections must be spent on marketing and promotion. And I would mention that this is a $50,000 sponsorship. It's actually worth about $150,000. Um, and it's not just, we're not just writing them a check for $50,000. We're purchasing advertising so we get a whole lot of name recognition throughout the event, including some stage time that we'll be able to just, um, talk about the county and we can talk about some of the economic development opportunities and that type of thing.
So it's, it's a package well worth fifty thousand dollars.
Okay.
And if you own a hotel or you own a VRBO or something like that, or a restaurant, or even if you work at one, part of your ability to pay the bills is dependent on these kinds of events where ninety-nine percent of them come, unless they're already local, but those that are coming from out of our area come and leave. And the nice thing too is that they mess up a mountain and one windstorm.
Fixes it.
Puts it right back to about where it was when they started.
Yeah.
And so that's such a, a vital thing too. And a lot of people like it for that aspect. But of course, we have those on Facebook and other places that are saying, I don't want to pay one penny of my taxes to support these groups coming in here. What they don't realize, and I'll wait for the cart to go by. That was all, that was actually planned, you know?
Yes.
Um, but they don't realize that they're not paying for it. In fact, they're receiving money for it and the benefits that we receive as a county that offset property taxes they would otherwise pay.
Yes.
And I don't know how many times we have to say it, but Facebook is a great, great place for good information. It's also a great place for a bunch of junk.
Right. I think it's important to know as well with these events. It's not like it's just us making a decision. We make several calls. Um, we discuss it with the state parks, the surrounding lodging properties, restaurants. We talk to a lot of people about these types of events and say, what do you think if this event were to go away? How would that impact your business? And, um, Trail Hero, everyone has a very positive thing to say about them. So it's a good event.
Good people.
Okay, thank you both.
Thank you. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt resolution R dash twenty twenty-three dash thirty-one sixty-nine. A resolution approving, um, the expenditure of TRT funding for a marketing, uh, event marketing agreement for Trail Hero, for the Trail Hero Event.
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Item number seven is consideration of resolution number R twenty twenty-three thirty-one seventy. A resolution approving TRT funding for marketing sponsorships and event funding for nonprofit organizations in Washington County. Jamie.
Hi. Um, so at the August twenty-fourth Tourism Advisory Board meeting, the following funding requests were recommended for consideration. Um, the marketing sponsorships, Arts to Zion has requested funding for printing of museum and gallery maps. The amount recommended is nine thousand dollars. The Dixie Watercolor Society requested funding for their marketing project. The amount, the amount recommended was four thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. The Hurricane Valley Chamber of Commerce requested funding for printing their visitor guide. The amount recommended was twelve thousand, five hundred dollars. The Washington Area Chamber of Commerce requested the same printing their visitor guide. The amount recommended was seven thousand, five hundred for a total of thirty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. For event funding, the Film and Media Alliance of Southern Utah requested funding for their Horror Fest International Film Festival. The amount recommended was three thousand dollars. The Senior Softball USA requested funding for their world championship. The amount recommended was eighteen thousand, two hundred dollars. The Desert Roads and Trails Society requested funding for their winter four-by-four Jan Brie. The amount recommended was twelve thousand dollars for a total of thirty-three thousand, two hundred dollars and grand total sixty-six thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars.
Good. And they love it because most of the time they can't survive without it.
Exactly.
So thank you so much. Again, this is TRT funding, correct?
Yes, for nonprofit entities.
And for nonprofits, yeah. And the TRT again is transient room tax.
Yes.
Okay. We, we live in this perfect society of full disclosure, and I want people to know that doesn't mean, you know, property tax.
Right.
Okay.
Three, three of these are helping you do your marketing job. I mean, visitor guide, visitor guide, museum guide here.
Yeah, all of the requests, um, go through a rigorous process, um, with our tourism advisory board. And economic impact is always the key factor.
Okay. Yep, I've seen the application. You're right. All right, item number seven then. I remove that we approve resolution number twenty twenty-three thirty-one seventy. A resolution approving TRT funding for marketing sponsorships and event funding for nonprofit organizations in Washington County.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
If a motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Item number eight is consideration of resolution number R twenty twenty-three thirty-one seventy-one. A resolution approving the execution of a cooperation agreement with the USDA, the Forest Service and Dixie National Forest for the construction and maintenance of certain forest roads. Ron Whitehead.
This is a new version of our existing Forest Service Maintenance Agreement. It was signed in twenty nineteen. This one will go into effect in twenty twenty-four. They're getting it in place. It did details which roads the county will work on, which roads the county and Forest Service will both work on and which roads will be strictly Forest Service. It's good for us because it gives us some, uh, actual say in what roads we're building and doing and keeping open and how we're working with it. If, if you consider this on page six of that, I've asked them to make one change and it should be here overnight and I'll get it to you tomorrow. If you do it, it has me listed as a county engineer and they'll, they'll change that to public works director.
So we can make that subject to legal review then to make sure that that changes.
Okay.
Is adopted once it gets in here tomorrow?
That would be your recommendation?
Yes, correct. And the resolution is framed that way, so.
Okay.
You're set.
Well, very good. Well, um, with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt resolution R dash twenty twenty-three dash thirty-one seventy-one. A resolution approving the execution of a cooperation agreement with the USDA, the Forest Service and Dixie National Forest for construction and maintenance of certain forest roads. And this motion is subject to, um, legal review and edit.
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you, Ron. Item number nine is consideration of resolution number R twenty twenty-three thirty-one seventy-two. A resolution authorizing the execution of a quitclaim deed from Washington County to New Harmony Town regarding New Harmony, regarding Harmony Drive. Ron.
This is kind of a cleanup item that our recorder's office found and we're trying to clean up. Uh, years ago, the county was deeded some property, uh, that ran along this Harmony Drive, whether it was for a tax sale or other purposes. But it was deeded specifically to Washington County, uh, in fee simple. It was not a dedicated as a right of way. Twenty twenty-one, New Harmony, not researching enough to find that out, went through and did a road dedication plot up through there to finish dedicating the road on out the other side of New Harmony and up towards Page's Ranch and Grant's Ranch. And got all the property owners along there to sign off on it and dedicated it and brought it and recorded it. The recorder's office picked up, there was a lot of little pieces along the outer edge of that that still weren't included in that. So they looked into it and found out that the county had that. And they had not approached us at all about signing off on the dedication. And we normally do this when the town annexes the area and just give it to them. But this has been there and where it was a fee simple, it didn't automatically go over as a road. So we're deeding them, quitclaiming, deeding them all those little parcels that made up that road in there. So they will have ownership and then whatever they had, uh, signed off on in their road dedication plat, will be the road dedication plat. There'll be several little pieces along the outer edge so that they'll have the opportunity to clean up with the property owners if they want.
Very good. Mr. Chairman, move that we approve resolution number R twenty twenty-three thirty-one seventy-two. Resolution authorizing the execution of a quitclaim deed from Washington County to New Harmony Town regarding being Harmony Drive with the parcels so indicated by the reporter's office.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you, Ron. Item number ten is consideration of resolution number R twenty twenty-three thirty-one seventy-three. A resolution approving a proposal for legal research services for the county attorney's office. Kevin Snow.
Happy to cover this one. This one's near and dear to my heart. Uh, we love our legal research over the attorney's office. So you may have noticed as you come to our office, we don't have rows and rows and rows of books. We use online legal research services and our contract is up. Um, this will be a new contract for Westlaw for the next few years.
How many years is that?
Three.
Three. I kind of miss the books, but you always had to update them.
Books are nice.
Yeah. For decoration.
But you're right, the law, I mean, when we're asked to weigh in on what courts have been saying on an issue, it's, it's always helpful to have online legal research that's been indexed and looked at by an editor.
Now, doesn't your boardroom have those fancy law books in it that you take your pictures in from?
Yes, they, no, I, to my knowledge, they haven't been cracked in a little while. It's, like I said, it's all hundred percent online.
Looks good though.
It does look nice. It looks legal.
Well, we do like to make everybody efficient in the county. So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we pass resolution R dash twenty twenty-three dash thirty-one seventy-three. Resolution approving a proposal for legal research services for the county attorney's office.
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Last item on the agenda is public comment. Uh, normally we have ten on here, but, uh, honestly, people sign up different ways. They, they email, they call, they, they text, they walk into the office. And we, we, we had a confusion on two of which came in in what order. So we said, you know what, we'll just make sure we just grab everybody and we'll be fair. And so we expanded it to twelve on this one because we didn't know exactly, uh, who do, who made it in at what time. So, um, we, we appreciate and the, for everyone, the respect to the, the rule of two minutes. When the time goes off, if you could wrap it up and as always, we're available individually to discuss things further more than what two minutes may or may not allow. Uh, first one is Angela Jones. Is Angela here? There she is.
So the American people, uh, have been told that there is no centrally controlled voting system. Through grammar requests here in Utah, we've found that we use the no ink poll pads for most of our voting precincts. These are, these contain cellular modems which use IP packets, IP addresses. They also use IP routers and they are connected to the internet. As a poll watcher, I got to see all these poll pads in action. And today, when I went to vote in person at the Dixie Center, I saw several of these poll pads. And they were delivering in real time, voting information to Vista, which is our state database. From Vista, it goes to Eric. Eric is a national database. And this particular company is so corrupt that Alabama, Florida, Iowa and Missouri have all left, uh, Eric. They will not work with them anymore because they say that they have, uh, inflated their roles prior to their elections. So what have we done here in Utah to combat this high-tech corruption? Well, we've created a flurry of bills. SB seventeen enables a person to vote from a location without a structure. So it's currently legal to vote from an empty lot. Uh, HB four forty-eight enables, um, it makes it illegal for the public to see Dropbox videos after an election. So if we can't see the ballot stuffing, I guess that we're supposed to assume that it does not exist. All of the bills, okay, and I've read through all of them. Some of them are a couple thousand pages. There's a lot of information. Um, but all of them are ineffective or fatally flawed. They have little things hidden in there. Please eliminate this complex, high-tech scam that's stealing our nation. We need to go back to paper ballots and we also need to get the confidence back of the electorate. We can do this, you know, if we can banish some of, some of this, this high-tech stuff. If we go back to paper ballots, if we go to small precincts, if we go to same-day voting, these kinds of things, they will help us feel more comfortable that our votes are not stolen.
Thank you. Next up is Shalyn Wilson.
Okay, I first just wanted to say thank you. Um, you met with myself and some other people individually this, the past couple of weeks. And we really appreciate, appreciate that you take the time to do that. I had something else to address today, but I did want to respond to what Ryan said about the RNC resolution. Of course, it's not a law, but it does show that it's a big problem across the country and we aren't just a group of crazy people who are asking for election reform. It is a national issue. I appreciate, appreciate what Ryan said, but to say that it is happening in other places but could not or isn't happening in Utah is absurd. When you know that there is a potential problem, you don't turn a blind eye. You put up all the defenses you can. I realize the commissioners are not the only people we need to address and we have met with Ryan. But as you have to certify, I would hope you would want transparent accuracy. There's a large grassroots movement across all fifty states working to get rid of machines and return to hand counting. Right now, Missouri is the state to watch. They are the see me state and several counties have adopted hand counting there. They've created procedures that make it simple to train other counties as they make the switch. And these procedures have been proven to be accurate and have held up to scrutiny. It's not just Missouri. More and more counties and more and more states are making the switch. Here is my challenge and call to you and to Ryan as well. You have proclaimed Washington County as America's county. I say, let's do what our founding fathers did and lead the charge. Let's be bold, act decisively to create the legal processes and pave the way to throw out the machines and return to hand counting. Let's be the see me county of Utah, leading out so that the rest of Utah can look to us and follow. The work of freedom can be messy, difficult and uncomfortable, but who better to rise up to the challenge than America's county?
Thank you, Shalyn. Next up is Leon Goobler. Is Leon here? There he is.
This past weekend in Hurricane, they had their annual Peach Days celebration. And, um, so Hurricane has Peach Days, Washington, or New Harmony has Apple Days, Enterprise has Corn Fest. Um, Washington City will have, um, Cotton Days. I mean, agriculture is a big perspect, you know, it, it's celebrated in Washington County. The number one float entry in the Peach Days Parade was nothing but a big old group of tractors. And with all of the agriculture that is so, um, it, it's a popular thing in the county. But sadly, we seem to be embracing growth at an alarming rate. And there is no way if something catastrophic happened that even the way we are currently that the county's agriculture could feed the people, the citizens of the county. We're squeezing it harder and harder. And I worry that we're not doing enough to protect agri, specifically agricultural water. Um, I, I don't have a problem with slow the flow, save H2O, all that kind of stuff. It, it's good. But from an agriculture perspective, it's agriculture is the easiest place to get the most amount of water in a hurry. And all that we get out of this is more neighbors and it makes the problem grow exponentially. Um, and I, I would just encourage you guys, when the opportunity comes, to, to do what you can to save agriculture. Cause it's, you, you never ever hear somebody say, gosh, I wish that field, um, would hurry and get covered up with houses. That'd sure look nice. That never happens. But everyone loves to see something growing in a field, a cornfield, a melon field. Hey, they love the smell of that and to see the tractors working. And, um, it's, it's just, I don't know, we're just getting farther and farther removed from that footprint in our society. And I, I just, I'm just not really happy about it. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Leon. Next up is Laura Bean.
Hello. I love what that guy just said. That's, I'm like, yes, 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 I'm all about gardening. So I just want to thank you, um, without, I mean, I, I, obviously you know, we've been talking about election, election integrity the whole year. And I just want us to come back to the whole point as liberty. And we've made it a proclamation that we're about liberty. And I was very encouraged by meeting with Victor very recently, um, with, and I, and I feel like we're on the same page and it makes me really happy because I, I think we're there. I think we're there philosophically. And I know we can get there in, oops, in other ways as well. I was trying to go live, but I don't afford. Okay, so I'm so grateful we had the opportunity to meet with Victor. I'm, um, glad that we kind of came to an agreement about what we need to do with the voting. And it sounds like Ryan is addressing a lot of that. So it would be awesome to have more of this kind of communication, um, in the future. Regular folks like me, um, coming frequently to discuss issues with our elected officials is what America is all about. Let's do more of this. We, the people, are supposed to be the drivers of our governments, not the other way around. So we came to present information regarding our elections and we were grateful that Victor listened with an open mind, understanding the world that we live in and the agendas at play. The main conclusion was that the public can randomly pick precinct numbers to be checked. The hand count can then be done for the selected precincts as many as we can, um, to make sure it matches the tabulator count. It's pretty simple. A few points I'd like to make, and I deleted a A few points I'd like to make, and I deleted a couple of them because of, from what Ryan already said. So one, today's congressional election is a high-value, we know, I think we all know this, target outside of our county. And our machines are vulnerable to outside interference. To think otherwise is kind of crazy. They're simply not secureable, and we must start moving towards full hand counts before the next year's election. Holy cow, we all know that one's going to be insane. So volunteers, we can do this with volunteers, from liberals to conservatives. Even better, let's do it with live streaming and record it if possible. I mean, I think transparency is a must. Finally, I'd like to point out how amazing it is that Hurricane City is doing hand counting, the incredible work they're doing. KSL Radio just did a story on that. Let's do what we can as a county to help them out because they're taking a bold step in this. And I hope this trend continues since the RNC is now encouraging hand counts nationwide, and that includes Utah, of course. Elections belong to we, the people. We are in charge for a demonstration of accurate hand counting. Please come to our Hand Count Roadshow on Monday, September 25th at 5:45 PM at the Washington Rec Center. Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you, Laura. Next up is Shoney. Shoney, not here, all right? April.
Good afternoon, gentlemen, and I'm just glad to see Gil is back and that he's recovered sufficiently. The one thing that I would like to know is how does a public official, an elected official, come up here and tell us, no, he's not going to do what we've asked him to do, okay? That's just inappropriate. That's not what I intended to come up and speak about. What I wanted to speak about, Adam, is the fact that you and I have been talking about town halls. And I'm still asking, I've been asking for over a year for us to have a town hall. And back in July, you said that you were working on it. And so in that same week, I called Sarah, and I asked for a meeting between the three of us. And I knew it was going to be difficult to get a date. But I'm retired. I can do whenever, okay? And so I've been asking for that, for a meeting between the three of you. I've emailed you several times since, and I haven't gotten a response, okay? And I understand that you guys are busier and, you know, than a one-legged man in a butt-kicking contest. But nonetheless, you know, there's a lot, a lot of things going on in our community that we need to have resolved. The other thing that I wanted to address is the fact that we want to know that you gentlemen have the spine to stand up against what's coming down the pike, okay? We already know that Governor Cox is a Biden psychophant, okay? He's all for the mandates and everything else. And you guys just put a statue up in the back of the building that had the Bill of Rights. It's a beautiful statue. But I need to know that you guys are going to have a spine to stand up against Governor Cox because he's a tyrant in the making. And you need to be aware of what is going on. And, you know, and it's inappropriate, any mandate. The last COVID event, there were businesses shut down. Businesses went out of business. And if we were following the Constitution exactly the way it was intended, zero businesses would have been shut down. It would have been up to we, the people, whether we want to go out in public, whether we want to shop, whether we want to eat out, whether we want to do whatever it is we want to do. It is not the government's job to determine what business is necessary or not. When I went and got my toes done, okay, I told the guy there, I said, you might not be essential, okay? Because nobody needs to have their toes done. That's a luxury. However, he is essential to his family. He pays the bills. And so we need to think about this. And we had this discussion before, that no businesses should be shut down. George Washington didn't notify Britain and say, hey, we got the smallpox timeout, we need to go home. So please, please, stand up and do what you say you are, the Washington County, America's county. Thank you.
Thank you, April. Brad? Next up is Brad Bennett.
Nice to see you guys again. So I'm here as a community advocate, and of course, I'm also a St. George City Council candidate. So a couple of things. I've actually talked over the last couple of years with thousands of residents. And the one issue that comes up almost every single time we have any kind of extended conversation is election integrity. We are not without problems, even in Washington County. If you recall, on July 12th, 2022, there was an election for Utah House 72, which involved Willie Billings and Joe Elyson. Willie Billings lost with 49.94% of the vote, only seven vote difference. But when a random audit was done on 7/18/22, it showed that he won by 60.96%. So the odds that that was accurate is one in 2,000. No hand recount was done. It was requested, and it was denied. So we have to do better there. And I want to go on record and say that I met with Ryan Sullivan before he was elected, several weeks before he was elected, at the Washington Rec Center, and we discussed this. And he assured me that if we ever had a scenario like that again, that he would do a full recount. So I want to make that, I want to be on record saying that. There was a poll done in April of 2023, the Rasmussen Poll, and it showed that 60% of Americans do not trust the election results of 2022 nationally. It also showed that in, that overall, in Washington County, only 70% trust the elections. So I would urge you to please devise some kind of mechanism where we can determine what the majority want when it comes to hand counting ballots and go from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Next up is Casey Loftus.
Well, I found my cleanest dirty shirt, but I figured if you two could get away without a tie, I was smart. My name is Casey Loftus, and to start, I would actually like to thank the commissioners and the county employees for all you do for Washington County. It's a big role that you guys have to play, and there's a lot of different angles and things that you guys have to work with. So thank you guys all for your services. I've been involved with many of you over the years in numerous civic events, search and rescue, most recently in preserving and maintaining the agricultural aspects of Confluence Heritage Park through our organization, Confluence Heritage Foundation. We've restored about half of the pastures down in Confluence. It's about 15 acres, and it's made a really big impact on the wildlife and visitors' overall experience. And the area right now is currently being irrigated with secondary water from the La Verca City Pressurized Irrigation System. In the future, we'll be using treated water from the Ass Creek Special Service District for the future irrigation needs, kind of in conjunction with each other. We recently received a $10,000 grant to help with fencing expenses from the state grazing program. We will be doing design and installation in the coming months and working with the HCP on doing those improvements, as well as others we have in the line. Some of the old fencing trash and debris, we've hauled off. We've cleaned up the area quite a bit. We've worked diligently with Brad Winder in combating noxious weeds. We've really worked hard down there to try to get rid of invasive trees and plants and different things in the pastures, which the reason for the grass pastures was just for that reason, to be able to mitigate the broadly noxious weeds that are down there. So he's been a wonderful asset in keeping those weeds under control. We have plans to introduce a fire mediation effort and plan in the form of short seasonal grazing of more than likely sheep. It's been an honor to preserve the agricultural history of Confluence and work with the many county employees and commissioners, which have put time into the park's success. It makes our role easier to have support, and we appreciate that. Thanks again for all you do, and we look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you, Casey. Next is Wendy.
For about a year, we've been asking for a return to hand counts, and state law already gives you the power to make that change. County commissioners have the power to enact a full hand count as outlined in State Code 20A-5-302. Quote, "Any county legislative body may adopt, experiment with, or abandon any automated voting system," end quote. And county clerks have the same power as outlined in 20A-4-104-9, quote, "If for any reason it becomes impracticable to count the ballots with tabulating equipment, the election officer may direct that they be counted manually," end quote. We, the people, are asking for two things. First, I'll cover September. Second, I'll cover November. For September, this primary is happening today. We're grateful to Ryan Sullivan. We're grateful that he's electing to do some hand count audits. I can tell you, though, as a, you know, I attended BYU on a full scholarship, graduated in statistics. I can tell you that he needs to use a random number or a sample size generator that takes into account cluster sampling. What the one that he's referring to doesn't work. Those numbers are too low for, since you sort of everything by precincts, and you're doing cluster sampling, you need to use a bigger sample size. Regardless, I'm hoping that you'll do as many as you possibly can and that you'll incur it, you'll help those city council members who are wanting to do some hand count audits. They've been, sorry, let me find my notes. Trust is earned through verification. We expect that their hand counts will match their machine counts, and we applaud their efforts to provide this proof in every election moving forward. But they need others to help them. And this was done in Utah County. Last November, County Commissioner, Utah County Commissioner Bill Lee, had lots of people helping him to do his job as a board of canvassers to certify the election. He had lots of people helping him. And we encourage you to help them and to let others help them. Second, for November's general election, we call for a full parallel hand count so that our county can be ready to eliminate machine counts before our primary elections next summer in 2024. This is totally doable since the entire country of Netherlands was able to switch to hand counts in 2018 in just six months. I talked to the guy who helped them just last week. Six months, 17 million people hand-counted election in Netherlands. Our small county of less than 200,000 would be a breeze. There are many accurate hand count methods to choose from. Many are demonstrated on our website, SouthernUtahansforTransparency.com. My favorites on there are the Texas one and the Missouri one. There's over 100 county commissioners across the nation who have voted to hand counts. We encourage you to do the same. Hand counting is transparent. It inspires trust. It saves money, provides same-day results. And if you look at the studies on our website, you'll see why hand counts are more accurate than machine counts. In addition, we've just learned that a public hand count demonstration will happen in our county on Monday evening, September 25th. We invite you to attend. The presenter is a cybersecurity and network consultant named Mark Cook. He's willing to meet with each of you privately. If you can attend on that Monday night, please make time for this. Our tabulators are not secureable, but even if you think they are, you should move to hand counts just to restore public trust in elections. Democrats don't trust them. Republicans don't trust them. So why are we still using them? It's time to return to hand counts.
Thank you, Wendy. Next up is Charlotte Potter. Charlotte? I see Charlotte. Shelley.
Good to have you back, Gil. Good afternoon. Since the 2020 election, it took no time to discover machine vulnerabilities and election problems nationwide. From unnatural zigzagging algorithms to sudden midnight votes, dumps, and spikes, to vote switching recorded in real time on national TV. At DeKalb County, Georgia Commission candidate Michelle Longspires got zero votes in her precinct on Election Day. The machine count showed her losing. Upon investigation, a hand count revealed she received 43% of that vote and actually won. The hand count completely reversed the outcome of the machine count. Check this out, along with many others, on SouthernUtah'sforTransparency.com. Every county across this nation, including Washington County, is vulnerable to machine manipulation and software errors. Many of us have gone to great lengths to warn you of this. The Republican National Committee has finally listened to we, the people. Just 10 days ago, on August 25th, the RNC unanimously passed 10 resolutions calling for a necessary return to excellence in elections, encouraging you, our county commissioners, and clerk to return to hand counts. This confirms that what we've been so passionate about for the last two and a half years truly has merit. Here is the most important highlight for you to know. The RNC calls on state legislatures, county, and municipal governments to pass laws and municipal codes and rules that allow for full, transparent hand counting procedures that are planned, timely, and fully observable by the public and registered parties for geographical defined audits and recounts. We respectfully ask that you follow the request of the RNC and agree to hand count. This is truly your chance to represent us. Thank you all, but I would like to add that I can understand, it sounds overwhelming to hand count. I can understand and feel empathy for Ryan, and it feels inconvenient and the whole bit to all of us. But our freedom is at stake. It really is. Because it's not necessarily what happens here, but after it leaves here through the vulnerable machines, we've seen so much proof of this, and just ask you to please consider this, okay?
Thank you, Shelley.
Thank you, Shelley.
And last is Erica. Yep, sorry, it was, it was drowned out there.
Good afternoon. It's good to see you. Thank you so much for making time so that everyone can speak. I do have a few random thoughts thrown together. But first, we, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish entertainment, ensure funding of arts, provide advertising of businesses, and the general recreation, and secure the blessings of indentured servitude for ourselves and our posterity, do organ and establish this taxation of the United States of America. That is what I heard when the Tourism Board, they're lovely people, that everything that they came up here and presented to you is not the proper role of government. And I know it's tradition and our culture that we're providing these things to entertain our community. And I love them. I'm not opposed to tourism. I'm not opposed to the recreation. I am opposed to our government providing those things for people. I get calls all the time to be, what is it called, the sponsorships for our business to sponsor sports clubs or the golf course and be in their advertisement. It's my choice if I be able to advertise in there or not. With all of these things, we don't get to choose if we wanted it to say the Greater Zion in the university's swimming building. Have you guys been in there and seen that great big sign that we paid, I don't know how much, $10 million to the stadium and to the school to advertise the Greater Zion? I've never once gone in there and thought, wow, I'm so glad my tax dollars went to that. And I know you keep wanting to say that it's not our tax dollars, but I've stayed in hotels in St. George. I've gone to TuaCon. I eat at restaurants. People that live here pay those taxes as well. So it's not just funded by our tourists. One concern I had, the Hurcan Fire Station may have to close in La Verca, maybe. One of those stations is maybe not getting enough funding. I do have concerns because I hear that Hurcan is getting funding for a fine arts building. Can we hang fine art in the fire station and give the money there to keep them able to run the station? Because that comes before arts. I do have one last thought on, we keep saying, provided by state law, you can fund different things. Just because it's a law doesn't mean it's moral. And one lesson I learned from what just happened with the school board, when they decided to change how they're taxing us, they shifted the tax from paying the debt services and put it into the capital levy. That if our elected officials want to change how the funds are distributed, they get to decide that, apparently, even if the people said no. So maybe can you choose to change the funds that are in arts or TRT and put that into other areas that are more essential? Thank you for your time. that are more essential? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Erica. Just a note for the public, the meetings are rebroadcast daily on TDS cable channels 22 and 108 at 10:02 and 5:30. And with that, we'll stay adjourned.